Welcome to our planning commission regular meeting. We are very happy that there's a P is on here. And so for the pleasure of the regents.
I am the Regent of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please let the record show that all commissioners are present.
And moving on to approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve with one note that the pages two, three, four, five, and six note that it's a regular meeting but it was a special meeting. So I just, we want that changed. I don't know that that is a formatting issue more than anything else, but I would make a motion that we approve subject to that minor change. Second?
And then from five to four. Okay, we go now to I don't want any public comments. Just to start this if I can ask a question. If you have some questions, they are for the later part. And so I'm agreeing with one of the comments on the agenda, but there is someone here who's not here on the agenda that wishes to be heard and should be heard. Anyone who would like to hear it? Anyone wishing to address the planning commission group of the comments section or on the agenda, I would ask you to create a request to speak for available to draw. An incomplete form is submitted to the planning commission secretary, required the people being heard by the planning commission. Any person wishing to address the planning commission on the subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requesting to choose those at this time. In order to conduct timely meeting, there will be three minute time limit per person. Overall time of the fifteen minutes of the common portion of the agenda. State law prohibits planning commission meeting with any action on a specific topic unless it will appear on the posted agenda. The time of speakers who define to speak.
Chair, Chairman Murphy, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you mind putting your microphone a little closer just so we make sure we get you on the transcript? Thank you.
Am I good? Oh, yes, I am good. Okay. All right. So we're, so we're hearing none. We will go to the consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar. Then we will be removed, we were moving on now to public hearing, item number two. And having to do with coastal development permit CDP 18-0012 and site development permit CDP 18-0037 to stockpile approximately 22,300 cubic yards of clean rock soil located within the industrial business district at 33750 Stone Hill Drive. And we will begin with...Melinda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the public. My name is Belinda Dynas, staff planner for the proposed project at 33750 Stone Hill Drive, which is identified as lot B owned by South Coast Water District. This project is before you for review and approval of coastal development permit and a site development permit. Here's an aerial map of the immediate area. Lot B is located between San Juan Creek and the railroad tracks, south of an existing boat RV storage area and north of existing storage yard uses. Overall, the subject site is approximately 6.47 acres. The property is located in the industrial business district zone, the coastal overlay district, and the FP2 floodplain overlay district, which is identified on the FEMA flood maps as Zone AO. Here's a photograph of the area as seen from San Juan Creek with lot A boat RV storage to the left and storage yard uses on the right. This is a map showing the entire 30 acres property owned and operated by South Coast Water District with the tenants located throughout the site and the project area is highlighted in yellow. The proposed project involves the stockpile of approximately 22,300 cubic yards of clean rock soil and rock material derived from the water district's tunnel stabilization and sewer pipeline replacement project in South Laguna Beach. Existing fencing will be removed and tenants with storage yard uses will be relocated. New eight-foot-high fencing and improvements for storm runoff and erosion control will be installed in the project area. Construction activity will include truck delivery of the soil material, compaction, maintenance for best management practices for storm runoff or control, erosion control, track out and dust control. The project requires a city grading permit, subject to review, issuance and approval by the public works department. Here's a site plan showing the project area. The proposed stockpile will occupy approximately 67,500 square feet of the total lot area. The proposed energy dissipator, four-foot wide V ditch and riprap pad are proposed, circled in blue, and the existing drainage swell to the south will remain in place. The teal line shows the proposed new fencing to match existing fencing currently located on the site, and the yellow line is the coastal commission permit jurisdiction line for reference. These are sections through the proposed stockpile with section A facing to the north with the access road on the left and OCTA railroad on the right. Existing grade is identified as the pink line on both sections. The proposed finish grade of the stockpile will be approximately 14 feet above existing grade, generally in line with the elevation of adjacent lot A as shown on the left of section B. This is a color rendering of the proposed stockpile as it relates to lot A and adjacent landscape as viewed from San Juan Creek channel. From the railroad tracks in Costco, here is the rendering of the stockpile with existing fencing along the railroad to remain. In order to grant approval of coastal development permit, the planning commission must make the following seven findings of fact to support the project. This is a close-up snapshot of the city's official local coastal plan post-certification map with the project area outlined in red. The proposed area is located in the coastal overlay district but is not located within the coastal appeals jurisdiction identified as potential public land trust area or within coastal commission permit jurisdiction. The proposed project conforms to the certified local coastal plan and the proposed improvements meet the zoning code development standards, including floodplain ordinance regulations. Public coastal access exists approximately one-half mile directly south at Doheny State Beach, and the project is considered in full development with no impacts to public recreation. For approval of a site development permit, these four findings must be made related to zoning code and general plan compliance, suitability of the site and site design, and specifically with regard to any improvements within the floodplain overlay district. The property is located in an area designated as a floodway, which is defined as a hazardous area due to the velocity of floodwaters which carry debris, potential projectiles, and could possibly cause erosion. The city's floodplain ordinance prohibits grading that would result in any diversion or increase in erosion flood levels or hazards to people or property, and furthermore, encroachments cannot result in any increase in flood levels during the occurrence of a base flood discharge. As such, the applicant has provided certification by a registered professional engineer with supporting documentation and a flood impact assessment report that the proposed project will not result in the aforementioned flood impacts and the project is in compliance with the zoning code regulations. These documents have been reviewed by city staff. Staff recommends approval of the proposed project with justification in the draft resolution to support that all of these findings can be met. Following this approval, the applicant must obtain a grading permit, which requires review of the erosion control plan. Construction activity is in final inspections. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the project and the staff report, and the applicant team is also available to answer any specific technical questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee, the commission? Yes.
Thank you, Belinda. How long is the stockpile expected to be in this location?
Yes, please. I will defer that question to South Coast Water District Representative Joe...going to put him.
We should probably open the public hearing.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Do we need to open the public hearing?
Okay. Well, at this time, we will be opening a public hearing. But you're, you're, right now, it's we're in section two, so that's where you want to be, right?
Yes, I wanted to answer the question of Scott, Commissioner McCannon. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Joe McDivitt on the South Coast Water District as the, part of the applicant, as the issue before you. So in answer to your question, the material is planned to be laid out and graded in one foot lifts and compacted and brought to the 14-foot level. Essentially, as part of the 2002 and 2016 EIR issues that have been approved, this would be potentially left in place for storage, for boat storage and such, or vehicle storage. So it's intended to leave it in place. Any permanent or final use for that would certainly be in action later if there's some additional or different uses currently planned or that have been approved through the EAR and the amendment.
Okay, so you have no intention of then, this is temporary storage and then it's going to go off somewhere else in the future?
No, sir. It's planned that it will stay in place.
Okay, thank you. Can you address why the gravel DG, DG, is that for dust control or what's the DG on top about?
It's for dust control and to stabilize it, so it's basically harder, as we did with lot A. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but lot A has the DG on it for purposes of storing the boats from the harbor redevelopment or potentially vehicles down the road.
Okay, are you going to put DG on the slopes as well or just on the top?
I'd have to refer back to our grading plan on that. Do we know?
We're not going to put DG on the slopes. We're going to plant it. DG is only in the flat area.
Maybe you could repeat that real quick into the microphone.
The DG will be on the surface, the top surface, not on the slopes.
And you'll be planting and irrigating the side slopes then?
Yes, yes, as needed.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for me.
Yes, Madam Chair, sorry. Belinda, maybe you can answer this. Do you have an estimate on how many trucks a day are going to be coming, or is there a plan, haul routes like that?
Yes, and we actually currently have that in place because of fill it comes to the site from the tunnel project. I want to say in this phase of the work, it's going to be probably eight to 10 trucks max on average a day. Some days it'll be less because they don't haul every day. Some days it'll be eight to 10.
Okay, and is that hauling done during the day or is it done at night? I know that that the tunnel project, there were nighttime hours on some of that?
No, all of our work on the tunnel is during the day.
Is it? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, during the required hours by the city ordinance. And the haul routes have certainly been discussed with the city engineer and we're very sensitive to that, the needs to be compliant with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so there's no further questions from the Commissioners. All right, then we'll move on to discussion with the Commissioners. Who would like to, who would like to?
Assume we're going to close the public comment period.
Oh, yes, we do need to close a public hearing. That is closed.
And I don't see any challenge with this project. I think it fits within the requirements, you know, the new water quality regulations that they're going to have to take care of, and it seems like it'll be consistent with what's next door. They're going to install, at least per the notes here, a new fence with a green screen, which is there today on the other stockpile, and so I'm in full support of this project.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
I agree with Commissioner Nelson. I see no reason not to approve this. It looks like they've taken all prudent actions to make this, the site conform to the area it's going to be located in, and the future flooding requirements have been addressed by an outside engineering firm, and that's met the requirements, so I see no reason not to support this project.
Commissioner Opal?
Similar to the other Commissioners, I don't have any issues with it. I had some questions earlier today that I spoke to Ms. Dynas about. She went through and got me all the answers to make me very comfortable with this.
Commissioner.
I agree with my fellow Commissioners. It seems like it's the appropriate spot to do this stockpiling, and it looks like they're doing a thorough job on the engineering. You know, if someone would wanted to story pull the thing, then we could have really seen where it's going to look like, but I think the computer rendered drawings look great, so I'll be supportive of the project.
I as well am in support of the project. So that said, is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve coastal development permit CDP 180012 and site development permit SPDP 180037 to stockpile approximately 23, 22,300 cubic yards of clean rock soil located within the industrial business IB district at 33750 Stone Hill Drive.
Very good. Thank you very much and thank you for staff.
I'll second that.
Oh, I got it. Sorry. And it is unanimously passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number three on the agenda. We'll wait till our visitors have left. And we will be calling on John Sampa, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Chair Murphy. Planning Commissioners. John Champ, I'm the case planner for the project at the Ruby Residence. It's a request for coastal development permit. The project is located in the RFS3 zoning designation on a coastal bluff lot. The site is improved with an existing 2,500 square foot, one-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. Site is located within the city's coastal zone overlay district and is within the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal commission. The project is proposing to demolish the one-story house and construct a 5,600 square foot, two-story, five-bedroom house with an attached 1,398 square foot, four-car garage with an attached workshop area. New landscaping is proposed on the site, however, there will be no irrigation within the bluff setback. This is the existing conditions of the built, of the site, improved with a 1958 style mid-century modern home. This is the front elevation to the left and the rear elevation to the right. This is the proposed site plan for the project. As you can see here on the left-hand, I'm sorry, on the right-hand side is Camino Capistrano, and on the left is the bluff, which slopes down towards PCH. It's in a general circle design with a courtyard in the center. The project is in conformance with all of the applicable RSF3 development standards associated with the project in that it meets all the necessary setbacks, height, lot coverage, landscape coverage, and required parking. As part of the project, a geotechnical report was submitted with the application to determine the stability and appropriate setback for the structure along the coastal bluff. As you can see here in blue is the codified 40-foot bluff setback line, which is established through the city's coastal erosion technical report that was produced in 1990. However, the applicant is proposing a deviation with a, of that setback, which is allowed through the zoning ordinance to 33 feet, which has been reviewed and verified by staff to meet the necessary requirements and geological stability for that reduced setback. Per the zoning ordinance, the lots within this area could go, or could be setback as close as 25 feet from the bluff edge. However, the applicant is only proposing 33 feet, and the structure is proposed at 37 feet from the bluff edge. The green line is identifying the factor of safety, which is the, essentially, the stable location or threshold point of the lot, which is placed at 20 feet back from the coastal bluff. In yellow, yellow-orange is the 50-year erosion line, which is the estimated location of where the coastal bluff edge will be in 50 years, and in the black is the present coastal bluff edge. Before you are the elevations of the structure. We have here the front and left elevation. As you can see, the structure is designed in a modern design with stucco, wood garage doors, glass metal railing, veneer, veneer stone siding, and a wood entry gate. This is the rear and right elevation. As you can see, more of the same materials are incorporated through to reflect the modern design of the structure. The project is requiring a coastal development permit, given its location along the coastal bluff. The project complies with all the necessary requirements for the coastal development permit, given that meets all the applicable development standards and does not impact public access or environmentally sensitive habitat areas, and conforms to the requirements of the city's certified local coastal program, including the city's zoning ordinance. Staff has determined that the application meets all the necessary requirements and findings identified for the coastal development permit in that it is in compliance with the city's local coastal program, the zoning ordinance, development standards, and applicable policies of the coastal act. Staff is recommending approval of the application and, subject to the conditions provided in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Chair Murphy, I would recommend if you're going to call the applicant, you open the public hearing.
Do, sometimes when we give these applications, we get materials, proposed materials with them. Do we need to review them or no? You guys will just review it at the time of building permit?
It's not necessary for this application, given that it's given through the scope of the coastal development permit, which are identifying appropriate setbacks for the coastal bluff. So at the building permit application phases where those materials will be reviewed and confirmed in conformance with the design map the architect provided today.
Okay, thank you. And are there any need for special footings like caissons or anything like that in this case?
No, that's not been, that's not required. It'll be more of a traditional foundation, slab-on-grade design, and that has all been reviewed through the geotechnical report.
Thank you.
Jonathan, on C2, the plan, it shows a, at the top right, a drain area. PCD drain. Yes, and, but there's no sprinklers to be installed, so is this without, without any, is this for rainwater?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not part of the landscape process?
Correct. The applicant, the resolution has been conditioned to ensure that there, one, is no irrigation proposed with this project, and that, and also, if there is any irrigation that's associated with the existing home, that that be removed as part of this application.
And my second question is on the setback was reduced from 40 to 33 feet, and who makes that recommendation?
The applicant's geotechnical engineer made that recommendation in the geotechnical report. That was reviewed by staff, including the city's geologist, and they went through all the necessary review elements and confirmed that 33 feet is inappropriate, is appropriate given the technical information that was provided.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Hi, I am. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sam Andrade, the project architect. Many of you have seen me here before, so it's good to be back. I've been here for a while. I first like to thank Matt and his staff, especially Jonathan, for all the good work we've done to get here. It's been a bit of a road, particularly at this time of year with the holidays. There's a lot going on, so it's good to be here, and we appreciate your approval tonight. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any, and other than that, we're just looking forward to our approval so we can keep moving. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Frequently mispronounced. Thank you very much. I am the president of the Castillo Del Mar Homeowners Association. We're directly across the street, across Camino Capistrano from the property. There's eight homes there. We are, our three-person board is unanimous in opposing this particular project, the way it's been scoped out. If, and there's basically three reasons for that. By the way, I would say that we would be amenable to something else, but here's the basic reasons we have a problem with this. The first is, this particular home was designed, the existing home, was designed and built by an architect, a local architect, who lived there for, until basically just very recently, when because of health concerns, he had to move away. Really, because of his wife's health concerns. He was committed to maintaining this single-story home. In fact, he had done some renovations to it recently, where he maintained, he expanded it, but maintained the single-story character. It's a double-wide lot and it's, it, you know, obviously affords to people who are nearby, very nice views, but it's very attractively done. And he was committed to maintaining that single-story character. It, what the proposal appears to, within all the setbacks, have the maximum height, maximum width for this, you know, large lot that would be very similar in character, not the exact design, but similar in character to a home that is still under construction. My apologies. That's about six stories down to the, to the south along Camino Capistrano. I don't know if it's exactly six, but it's approximately six. And if you look at it, it is just this, I can only describe it as a monstrosity. It is this huge block that seems completely out of character with the neighborhood. What's being proposed seems like a very similar huge block, a 7,000-square-foot block of maximum height, maximum width. And it just seems like it's completely out of character with this particular neighborhood. In addition, not only this home, which is under construction, but two doors further to this, just to the south of this home. So within about six homes of it, there's been another home, which is currently under construction. So we've been dealing with a lot of construction on Camino Capistrano, along the bluff, for a couple of years now. It's, you know, in addition to the dust and noise, there's trucks, constant traffic. It's, it's been a real problem that we've had to deal with for, you know, a couple of years now. And now we're, there's a proposal for another huge home that would be there. So we respect, and we don't know exactly, but it looks like they are not, you know, thinking about doing any excavation in order to achieve the two stories, but they're gonna go straight on the, on the ground level and go up the maximum height. If something could be done where it's either scaled back or scaled down so that it doesn't appear to be this monstrosity, we'd very much appreciate that, those homeowners who are living nearby.
My question, you mentioned there were three items. One, that the prior owner had committed to one story?
Yes.
And that would-
And by the way, anecdotally, I'm sorry to interrupt you, anecdotally, we were told, and I don't have this firsthand, but I, we were told that there was some discussion between the original owner and the person who purchased the property that that main, single structure would be, single-story structure would be maintained. So we don't have that, you know, firsthand, but we had heard that that was the case. But, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, and the second point you made was the massing?
Yes, just the huge size.
And the third point was-
Was the construction issues. The fact that we've been dealing with construction within six homes of that for a couple of years now, and now we're gonna be dealing with even more of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I do have a question for staff. I believe the proposed structure is 24 feet. Is that the maximum allowable or, I'm not sure?
Correct. 24 feet is the maximum allowable. However, that's just for one portion. The second-story component is relatively small in terms of footprint in comparison to the rest of the structure. I'd say it's somewhere in the 400 to 500 square foot location. And then aside from that, the rest of the structure would be at one story and the majority of which would be in approximately 12-foot height.
Could I, could I just add too, that height in the city is based on roof pitch? So 24 is the maximum with a flat roof. You could go taller with a 6 to 12 pitch roof, which I believe would be 28 feet.
I have another question. If you look at the front elevation, and this kind of follows along Commissioner Opal's question. So you said, well, it's max height at, basically, that one element that's over the right side of the home, I presume?
Correct.
On the front elevation, it looks like the middle, about 40% of the structure, looks like there's some clear-story windows there. Or, let's see, guardrail. Is there a rooftop deck there?
That's a deck. It's actually a second-story deck. So that is improved with, or proposed with glass guardrails, and it is on the seaward side of the structure.
Okay, so that, so how far back is that set from the street then, approximately?
Are you referring to the, the deck or the second-story element?
The, the deck. The deck.
So the deck would be approximately 90 feet?
Okay.
It is, it is at the back end of the courtyard as you look at the site plan?
Right. Yeah, I see it. Is the deck required to be 300 square feet or less?
No, it is not considered a roof deck, so it's not held to the limitations of a roof deck, which would be a maximum of 300 square feet or 25%.
Is it not considered because there's other second-story element there that's kind of more of a balcony than a deck? Or, as opposed to a roof deck, it's-
It's, it's below the plate height, below the plate height of the tallest portion of the structure. So therefore, it is not a roof deck.
Okay, thank you. Did you, did staff, was staff aware of the opposition to the project before this evening?
Staff had not received any input.
Okay. Had you kind of considered the, what the speaker was talking about relative to massing and so forth and meeting character with the surroundings? Did you guys consider that in your recommendation for approval?
Yes, I think based on the overall design of the structure from, as viewed from the street, especially with the line of sight, much of the structure will be viewed as single-story. You will see a portion of the second story. However, it is much further back. It's, there's not a significant, large, two-story element at the front of the street. So it does definitely articulate the architectural design to avoid any massing impacts and is far less than what they would, what the applicant would be allowed to develop, given that the front yard setback is 10 feet for the livable area here. So they could have a two-story element right at 10 feet back from the front of the property. However, this is setback, without having a scaled version of the plans, I'd have to say approximately 50 feet back from the front of the property.
That second-story element is setback 50?
Correct.
Okay. It's not right, it's not straight over the garage?
That's correct.
It's back behind. Okay, great. Thank you. I have no further questions. May I address the chair?
Uh, yes, you can do that.
It's, it's just a very brief response to the, to the issue of whether there is any discussion or any awareness of any opposition. We were not even told of this project until we received a public notice just a couple of weeks ago, whenever that came out. So we had no idea that this project was even, nobody, nobody talked to our association that there is even such a project being considered.
Chair Murphy, if you like, I can go.
Please.
I think, I'm in support of this project. I think that the architecture looks good and the site planning and so forth. I am sensitive to the points that you're bringing up, and I'm not gonna try and pronounce your last name, I'm sorry. But it does appear that those higher elements are setback significantly from the street that I think will significantly lessen the impact of what they could potentially be. So with that, I, I find that this project is in compliance with all the required items and the Dana Point's unencoded. I'll be supportive of the project.
Even though the building is considered a two-story building, if you look at the overall footprint, the second story is probably about 10% of the total building. So I think that the architect and the owner have tried to minimize that impact of a full second story in this area and trying to keep it the one story and keeping a lot of that area open. And so I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, first I'd like to say it's very difficult to be the president of a homeowners association and represent people. I know that's a difficult task and it's not paid well as a volunteer. So appreciate you making your comments, knowing. In my view, the, the issue is, the property owner has a right to develop the property and, and if it's been done reasonably, it would be difficult for us to take away his rights for someone else's view as a, as a possible reduction. And number two, the massing, I think that the previous, the other two commissioners have made that point. And the construction issues, the third point that you made, I guess that's the price of progress and with the properties along the beach there, the beachfront, I think the age of all the properties are such that there's gonna be renovation going on and that's a, an unfortunate byproduct of progress. So I'm in favor of the project.
I'll never be a singer. I would like to add that I've gone past that home 100,000 times, no, not that many, but I live up in that area. And walking by and looking at all the other houses, and it is true, there is such a variety of homes up there off of Camino Capistrano on most sides of the streets. Obviously, on the hillsides or on the bluff sides, where you see huge masses of buildings and then we can also, you just go down the street and there'll be an older, a much older building, home that is much smaller. And it's just, it's a whole lot of different things as you walk down there. And the older homes aren't, can't be there forever. They have to, you know, at a certain time, I think this one was from the 50s, am I correct? Yeah, 50s. And has retained the quality for such a long time. And I think it's pretty exciting with looking at the renderings, what they actually can do without just a huge two-story boxy home. Because they've really, they've left a lot of open space on the second floor and they've, they've, they've moved, you know, it's not just flat, they've got it designed in a nice way, gives it on the second floor and it's certainly open in the bottom too, with the pool and other amenities. So given that this also is, is located, as I said, where it is, we're across the street from this, this particular project is a, I don't remember the name of, it's like a racket club or something?
Marbella.
Marbella. Yes, thank you. And they are just one to two-story. And so we've got everything there and this is progress. We want progress and we don't want anybody to, to feel like they've, you know, been pointed out. But this is, in my estimation, a good project, very good project and it, and it meets the needs for that particular space and it, and it won't be overwhelming and overburdening. So I support it. Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve coastal development permit CDP 18-0002 to allow the demolition of an existing single-family dwelling and construction of a new two-story, single-family dwelling with an attached three-vehicle garage on a coastal bluff lot at 35261 Camino Capistrano.
Second that.
Okay. Vote. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas everyone.
Thank you. And a good New Year.
Happy New Year.
Everybody. All right, moving on, we have Mr. Giamede.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Due to the proximity of the proposed project to my primary residence, I will be, I am conflicted out, so I'm gonna step out of the room and come back when the hearing's up.
Yes, we would like that. Thank you. We will miss you. All right, Mr. Giamede.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Murphy, fellow commissioners, members of the public. So tonight's project is a request to approve a tentative parcel map for condominium purposes to allow the individual ownership of a previously approved three-unit multifamily dwelling use within the Lantern Village in the city of Dana Point. The subject site is located east of Golden Lantern, between La Paz Avenue and Silva Road, and is within the residential multiple-family RMF 14 zoning district. The site's a vacant 8,000-square-foot through-lot with frontages on both Malaga Drive and Silver Lantern. The site's surrounded by a mixture of single-family, duplex, and multiple-family units. This is an image of the through-lot as seen from Silver Lantern and again seen from Malaga. As you can see, there's a pretty steep topography there, it's a natural hillside from, never been developed. So as you can see here on this image, the lot was previously comprised of two separate parcels, which were merged through a parcel map back in 1984. In May of 2017, city staff approved the site development permit for the subject site, allowing development of a multiple-family dwelling use consisting of three units with two detached garages across the merged parcel. The proposal also permitted roof decks and retaining walls that exceeded 30 inches in height. The construction plans associated with this project are currently being reviewed by the city through the building and grading plan check processes. I believe they're in the second round of review right now. So although the 2017 site development permit approval authorized the subject multiple-family dwelling development on a single, on a single parcel, the applicant did not apply for the necessary subdivision approvals to allow for the sale of individual units. And although it was a previously approved as apartment project, as an apartment project, the applicant is now proposing to process this tentative parcel map to allow individual ownership- the applicant is now proposing to process this tentative parcel map to allow individual ownership as condominiums of the three dwelling units and their respective garages. Units one and its garage are shown here in blue. And then two, units two and three on the right-hand side along Malaga here are shown in yellow. And as you can see, the garages are, are detached and they're at the, uh, the street elevation of both Silver and Malaga. And then the units are, uh, are, are, are up higher. So, under the Dana Point subdivision code, a parcel map is used for purposes of subdividing a single parcel into less than five units. And the preliminary condominium plan, which is attached in, in, in the packet you received, illustrates how this individual ownership interest in each structure is proposed and how the common interest areas will be divided. Prelimarily, individual interest or as we call it airspace will include one dwelling unit, their garage and/or the parking stalls, decks. And, uh, it's also identifying the common areas and association areas, uh, as well as the private areas. So, specifics relating to the maintenance standards and responsibilities of the development will be further defined in the CCNRs required as conditioned in the attached draft resolution. The tentative parcel map meets the requirements of the city's subdivision code and is consistent with both the general plan and the respective zoning designations. The site's suitable for the proposed type of density of development as previously identified through the two thousand seventeen entitlement, which was approved. And therefore, staff feels the required tentative parcel map findings can be made. Based on the analysis, as well as the project's consistency with the city's general plan, the zoning code and subdivision code, staff determines that the required findings supporting the project can be made. Accordingly, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the attached draft resolution approving tentative parcel map TPM two thousand eighteen dash one twenty-six. That concludes my presentation. Uh, the applicant, as well as myself, are here to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions to staff?
Danny, can you, uh, tell me about the parking? I see, uh, unit one, two stories, three bedrooms, three bathrooms and a three-car garage.
Correct.
Units, uh, two and three, uh, the first floor has a, a three-bedroom. On unit two, three-bedroom and two bath. And unit three, uh, is, uh, on the second floor, it's two-bedroom and two baths. So, I look at three, six, eight, eight bedrooms and, uh, s- six parking spots. Is that correct?
Uh, that's actually incorrect. Uh, so, uh, units two and three are both actually one-bedroom units. Um, they include one bedroom and two baths each. Uh, the, uh, the property or the, sorry, the structure and garage located off of Silver Lantern, uh, is, acts and looks more like a single-family home. Um, that has three bedrooms and three baths. Uh, essentially, uh, what our zoning code requires for parking is i- i- if the parking's over, i- if, if it's over a duplex, so a multiple-family dwelling unit, um, this one being three, uh, we look at it based on the, the number of bedrooms as, as you've stated. Uh, within our analysis, the approval back in two thousand seventeen, uh, we determined that, uh, four parking stalls, covered parking stalls and a garage are required for this development. Um, and then, let's see here, this is my notes. So, four covered stalls were required, two uncovered and one visitor stall. Uh, this project, uh, actually proposes to have a surplus of parking for the required number of bedrooms. It's proposing a, uh, a three-car garage both off of Silver Lantern as well as Malaga Drive, uh, which will take care of the four covered parking stalls. Uh, it's got two uncovered parking stalls, uh, I'm sorry, two parking, uncovered parking stalls are required, uh, under the number of bedrooms. And, uh, they are proposing, uh, two uncovered parking stalls that, uh, would be, would be parked in the driveway. Those would be parked tandem, but they're tandem to the non-required garage spaces, if that makes sense. And then, there's also, uh, uh, one visitor stall required. And, uh, the, uh, the development is proposing three visitor stalls, uh, in the driveways.
So, you're saying there's four covered spaces, the three-car garage? Excuse me, the three-car garage and then, um, one, one other covered space?
Co- correct. Yeah, all I was getting at was that, uh, the development, uh, proposed a surplus of garage parking. Uh, they have two three-car garages, one off of Silver and Malaga. The, the, the zoning code, uh, calls for and requires, uh, four garage or covered parking stalls based on the bedroom count, the total. So, this development is proposing a surplus. It has, it has actually six garage spaces.
Okay, but if you look at Plan A two, uh, unit three on the second floor, this is the one-bedroom?
Correct.
And the study is the same size as the bedroom?
Correct. So, the study, uh, as part of the proposal, the study, uh, was not considered as a bedroom. Um, this is just in, you know, utilized as an office space or a workspace. As part of the approval, uh, and through the conditions back in two thousand seventeen, there's a requirement that the project may be maintained at that one-bedroom.
There's an adjacent bathroom to that study and there's then another bathroom to the bedroom. So, there's each of those bedrooms, the, the study and the bedroom each have a bathroom.
Correct. Yeah, there's, there's two bathrooms in there. That is correct.
So, the label study, uh, that defines it as a study, but not a be- a bedroom. But what I'm, my, my concern is-
Right, is that it would be converted to a bedroom? Uh, that's something that we can, uh, we can definitely take a look at, um, in a further, um, i- i- in further, uh, uh, review. We're actually looking at this parcel map as a preliminary, uh, parcel map. It's a tentative parcel map right now. So, there's some latitude to be able to, uh, uh, to reallocate and move around the parking to make it work.
Yeah, I, I'm not concerned about whether someone studies there or sleeps there. My concern was the parking.
Right. Understood.
Madam Chair, can I follow on with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, following Commissioner Donner's thoughts, if, if, uh, if the study in unit three hypothetically was a bedroom and if the study and the family room in units two were hypothetically bedrooms, so there was three additional bedrooms, um, shown on this plan, then what would the parking requirement be?
You know, I'd have to calculate the parking, uh, to make sure that that conforms. Let me see here. It would require two additional covered stalls, which, speaking of the, the three-car, the two three-car garages, that would be, that would be maintained, um, by the covered garages. Uh, there's an additional point five or half a space uncovered that's required. So, for those two additional, hypothetically speaking, used as bedroom stalls, that would be, uh, uh, rooms, that would, uh, require one additional uncovered space that could also be utilized on the driveway.
Okay, so, so, let me make sure I understand. So, as shown and labeled-
Correct.
They're required to have four covered spaces.
Correct.
But with three additional bedrooms, they would be required to have two additional covered spaces for a total of six.
Correct.
And they're providing six as shown right now.
They're providing six garage spaces as shown.
And then, if those were relabeled as bedrooms, they would also have to have one uncovered stall or space.
That is correct.
But they've got effectively six spaces in the driveway. So, you're, it sounds to me like you're saying, if those were labeled as bedrooms, they would still be in compliance with the parking requirement.
Correct. As I said to Commissioner Donner early on, uh, there is a surplus of parking in the event that, that those, those studies were utilized as bedrooms or covered as bedrooms. Um, there is obviously a surplus of parking, um, as shown on the plan currently. If that happened in the future, there would still be, um, ample parking or the required amount of parking provided on this development.
Okay, thank you. So, you said something though that caught my attention earlier, which was, you said something about a prior approval in two thousand seventeen required that these be one-bedrooms. Did I mishear you or?
Uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, presentation, uh, the, and as shown on the plans, they're shown as one-bedroom units, correct. The two on the right-hand side, on, along, along Malaga.
But they're not required per se to be one-bedrooms. That's just what they're proposing.
They're not required, but if it was something that, that needed to be, um, part of a condition for the, for the parcel map or something that we needed to revise, that would be something that we could, we could definitely talk to the applicant and look at.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Can I, can I add one more thing? This is, uh, again, this project was, uh, a- a- as Commissioner McCamp-McConna stated, it was previously approved back in two thousand seventeen for the development itself. This is simply to, uh, subdivide the parcel so that there's individual ownership rights for each unit. Uh, so, essentially, what you're seeing here is a, although it's not approved this way, is a single-family home along the Silver Lantern side and a duplex along the Malaga Drive side. The duplex, uh, under our zoning code, eh, on a lot that's forty, uh, I believe, less than forty feet in width. If this one is at forty, so this doesn't apply, but just, just to, for, for your purposes. Less than forty feet in width, with, can utilize a three-car garage with a fourth stall parked in tandem. Uh, so, per this design, a- although we did not use the duplex parking arrangement because it truly is three units on one merged parcel, we could not use that, uh, they are providing the, the required parking, um, if it were, if it were a duplex on, on Malaga and then a single-family home along Silver. But again, this is simply to approve this as a, uh, as a, as a parcel map so that the units can be sold separately, individual rights.
And does it, it complies with all height requirements?
It does. Uh, the structures are, are all flat roofs. Uh, the, uh, units one and units two and three are both at twenty-four feet. And, uh, the garages are ten, separated ten feet apart from the, uh, from the units and are roughly about ten feet lower than, uh, the units themselves.
Okay, and are the roof decks less than three hundred square feet?
The roof decks are, uh, these are technically, um, actually, yeah, no, these are, yeah, no, these are technically, uh, not roof decks. They are, because they're lower than the top plate line of the structure above. So, they do not need to meet that three-hundred-foot maximum.
How, on page A five, how are the, how is the deck below the top?
Oh, excuse me, I, I believe you were referring to the, uh, the, the deck on top of the garage. Yeah, the decks on the, on the structures themselves, uh, they do comply with the roof deck requirements. Those are above the top plate line. They were processed with the site, the original site development permit back in two thousand seventeen.
So, they're on the roofs.
Correct.
And they're, they were previously approved in two thousand seventeen. But it appears they're bigger than three hundred square feet.
I'm referring to the decks on top of units two and three and units one, not the, so, the plans call this, this deck area above the garages, which do not meet the definition of roof decks for our zoning, uh, under our zoning code, units two and three and unit one. Uh, they both have decks that are located above the top plate line, which you're referring to. And those are under three hundred square feet.
Okay. Okay, I'm confused because it says roof deck all over here.
Yeah, there's a misconception, th- this is an issue on the plans that we'll, we'll have corrected seeing this, uh, seeing this now. This should actually be considered a deck. And then, on units one, two and three, it should be, uh, it should be called roof decks.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments? Mr. Andrade, do you have other further comments? Oh, he left. Guess not. Okay. No speaker slits. Everybody had their say?
I'll lead off if you want. I'm, uh, I'm in support of this project. It appears to me that it's, uh, it's discretionary because it's before us, but it's relatively ministerial since it was already approved by staff as the, as the building. Now, we're just approving the tentative map. So, um, with that, I'm, uh, supportive of the project. Appears to meet all those unencoded requirements and so forth. And I wish the applicant luck.
Second?
Okay, there is a second?
No, I'm sorry, that was not a motion. It was, it was, I was seconding what he said.
Who's on first?
It's time. No other comments.
No comment?
I concur with their comments. So, I will make a motion to approve tentative parcel map TPM two zero one eight dash one two six for condominium purposes to subdivide the airspace and allow individual ownership of a previously approved three-unit, multiple-family dwelling use.
All right. Ready?
Second.
Please vote. Eric is, is abstaining and otherwise it passes. Four zero with an abstaining.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. All right, now comes the big gun.
Got the record reflected, I'm back in my chair.
All right. All right, I think we're gonna hear from Sean Nicholas.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, uh, Senior Planner. This is the Monarch Bay Beach Club Lights for, associated with coastal development permit eighteen zero 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 six. And it's my pleasure to present to you the final public hearing of two thousand eighteen. So, just to orient everyone, this is the Monarch Bay Beach Club located within the Monarch, uh, Bay Development here on the north end of town. The project site was developed as such in nineteen sixty-five. Project in front of you this evening is just simply to replace the seven, uh, light standards and twenty-six ballard lights, uh, within the same locations. No expansion of those, uh, existing facilities primarily located within the parking lot area as shown here. You can see, uh, due to primarily weather being within close proximity, I can say that I was at the site for a site visit on another issue and saw one of these light poles fall over into the bushes. So, it seems to be needed. So, uh, again, these are all in the existing locations. You can see the aesthetics, uh, modernized, it's just in terms of the, the lamp, uh, heads themselves, all utilizing LEDs with the newest, uh, light cutoffs and shields, uh, available on the market to avoid light trespass. And as a component to ensure that, we had the applicant provide a photometric plan which shows, as you can see, that there will be no increase to the illumination surrounding the site as a result of the, uh, uh, re- uh, new light fixtures. Uh, and that's both to, we're concerned with both the adjacent residents as well as you can see the ocean, uh, waterline as well indicated on the plan. Again, in conclusion, no increase to the number of light standards or ballards to the site. This is merely a replacement due to maintenance, due to proximity to the coast. Shielded, again, the, all of the lights and no light trespass to avoid impacting the neighbors into the coast. Staff has reviewed the application and has found that all the findings associated with the coastal development permit can be made. And staff does recommend, uh, approval subject to detached findings and conditions of approval, uh, provided in the draft resolution this evening. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the, uh, managers from the Monarch Beach Resort who are applicants this evening are available should you have any additional questions.
Thank you. All right, question? Questions? Thank you. All right, questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, Sean, real quickly, so we've got R and R of existing lights. They're in place today. Other than the design, nothing's changing?
They have to remove the, the concrete bases all the way down, and that's what's triggering, triggering this based on the coastal development definition in our LCP, which is our zoning ordinance. It qualifies as development necessitating the coastal development permit because within the proximity of the mean-high tide line. So it's just the bases structurally, and then, yes, all the light fixtures above it.
Okay, so otherwise, this would be a building permit?
Yes, sir.
If it wasn't for the coastal zone?
You are 100% correct.
Okay. That was my only question, so I wanted to understand why we have this. Thanks.
I just wanna know how you can make a light fixture last close to the ocean 53 years.
It, like I said, it was, it was pretty amazing watching it fall over at, at the slightest touch, so it definitely seemed needed.
I have two questions. One, are the ballards LED?
Yes, the proposed ballards will all be LED.
Okay, 'cause it does, I'm just asking, 'cause on the lunar schedule, the catalog number didn't match the cut sheet, and the cut sheet didn't show LED?
My understanding is that all the lights will be LEDs with all applicable shields.
Okay, and then on the conditions of approval, we keep talking about the shields with the LED, a lot of times the lights don't have the pollution like a lot of the prior lights did, so are shields available for this type of structure?
Yes, and it's required by the Title 24, the green code, you know, shielding is required as base with anything to avoid light trespass. It's not, it's a condition of approval because it's a requirement that they can't express out, if that's something that you wanna see, Commissioner, we can definitely add that.
Usually, the LEDs don't have that, like the other fixtures used to. That's all I was asking. Thank you.
So the page with all the numbers, that's the photometric plan, and that's just to show that in the intense areas in those circles, it'll show the perimeter in which the light will be directed down, and then the numbers on the outside where it gets, starts to see the .1-foot candles, that's a measurement of the, of the light at that range outside of where the, the light is being focused to. And so it just to shows that, you know, outside of the project site, there will be minimal to no increase to illuminations to any of the surrounding uses. It's my pleasure.
I can make a motion, if you like. I move we approve coastal development permit CDP 18-0006 for the replacement of existing light standards and light ballards within 300 feet of the mean-high tide line at the Monarch Bay Beach Club at 500 Monarch Bay Drive in the recreational REC zoning designation.
Second?
Just real briefly, I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Stacy Hudson, in case you didn't get a chance to meet her, before our last planning commission meeting. She is our new senior admin, replacing Shane Sharkey. So we wanna welcome her aboard, and I wanna thank Lauren, who's been filling in. We may as here one more meeting, a little more cross-training, but again, I wanna thank her. As this is the last meeting of the year, I just wanted to thank you all for your service. I think we really put you to the test these last three weeks. We can't remember a time where we've approved 10 projects in three weeks, but you guys really rolled up your sleeves, and we appreciate that, and all the thoughtful comments and questions you've given us in these hearings. Looking forward to 2019, and just as a reminder, our city office is, will be closed from December 24th to January 2nd. And with that, thank you. January 14th.
I, I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays, and all that. If we approve 10 projects in two weeks, that means that 10 staff reports were written thoroughly, and thought through, and argued, and defended, and prepped, and edited, and all that stuff. So it's you guys that are doing the, the heavy lifting around here, and we recognize that, and we appreciate that very much. I just wanna say, I think town looks great with all the lights up and everything. It's fantastic driving around the, the harbor, the harbor days looks amazing. And so it's just always a joy to live here. One thing that I think we should consider scheduling or discussing is notice requirements. I brought up at the, at the last meeting, and Commissioner Donner seems kind of receptive to, to at least talking about noticing and lead time on, on either what we, someone considers large-scale or potentially controversial projects, so that, so that people have more time to review and absorb them, and, and, you know, they can't use that argument against the city. So I think that staff should consider bringing that to us for discussion. I have no preconceived notions of where that goes, just other than we ought to talk about it. Because I don't think, well, that's what we did on the wave, is, is, that's the way we've always done it, it's not necessarily satisfactory. That's it, thank you.
You know, one of the subjects that came up, it keeps coming up, is story polling. And one of the issues, the only positive thing about story polling is that it tells the neighbors that something's happening. And I think a lot of people don't go to the post office and look at the notices, and they may not look in the paper. So I'm, I would suggest we consider using Nextdoor or one of the other electronic notifications to tell people there's a project going on in a specific neighborhood. So people would know about that and would be able to then contact the city and, and find out more about a project. So when, when the person came in today and said, well, I've only known about this for a week or so, I thought, well, he's known about it longer than we've known about it. But, but I think it would be a positive step for the, for the city's planning group to reach out to the neighbors that are gonna be potentially affected. And I also like to say thank you to Lauren. She did a great job, and there wasn't a beat missed while that went on, so, and thanks to the staff. I reflect, I, I support Commissioner McCann's comments to the staff. Thanks.
I will not opine on noticing items today, just for the sake of time, but Merry Christmas to all of you. Thank you for all the hard work, and I had one other comment, and now I can't remember. Oh, I'm gonna be on vacation on the 14th, so. FYI.
Furthermore, the story polling, that the, the, God, I can't think tonight. Council, city council, voted 3 to 2 to not send the story polling back down. So they have, yeah. Yeah, I hope everybody has a great holiday and vacation, and, and something fun. Fun, and stays well. Hope someone who knows. Stay healthy, please, stay healthy. And we appreciate the staff. Again, with all the work that comes through here, we know it's 10 times better, or more so, of what's going through back there, and how hard everybody works, and everybody has the, it seems like you, you call one, one of the staff, and they have that answer right away. And, and they're very gracious about it, and it's a true gift to us. I think all of you are a true gift, so we appreciate that. And with that, anything more? No? All right. Okay, do it. Oh, okay. We are adjourned.